Six.
Records.
For then meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, in the civil liberty and justice for all. While I'm trying to say I got out, I want to just get hurt with my carry my protons. Um, the live stream is currently experiencing issues, but the meeting is being recorded and will be posted um as soon as it's over. If the live stream comes back and will uh comes back on, we'll put it up uh soon. Um, at this point in time, I would like to ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a third and final time, if there's anyone that would like to address the board, please come forward. Seeing none, public portion is closed at six oh two. Next on our board is the administration status of students. I'll turn over to you. So before I started, I was like two things. We're heading into the end of the quarter. All over, all over activities, right? Um, I know we were having very impactful spring. Back to you, you're very patient. Um, but I think everyone's coming to the element of the fact that it's important to go out and head out every day. So I'm going to take long and take a way to come to the community. Um, so today I'd like to present a very special award and these are awards by huge and people were part of the thing that was the reason that we are on the basis of the words are selected by the Yeah, um, usually when they're selecting these for the award, it's pretty easy to get that same room arguing over which student should get the award. Uh, they had some like the pride or like the life there was a lot of long competitive to share for the two students. You know, the R's. That we help our kids. That's surprising. I want to congratulate our students today. Our students very appreciate our school and so proud to prepare them to attend. A lot of the fascination and the production of the video. Thank you, that was all for a second. Congratulations. To get singled out as the top two students of the entire senior class of the same course, what do you think, John? So I hope you realize that and pride in yourselves and we hear it tomorrow. Just saying. Thank you guys. Thank you. And thank you, Lizzie, always for coming. I know it's time.
I don't, we don't have a mic that goes to the feed, but I don't set up the mics.
Always thinking. So at this time, we've worked really hard the past few months, months on our summer programs. Um, and again, I, I think you heard it from us that, you know, wait two years of pandemic. Some students have been in class since March of twenty twenty. They came back in September. We knew there would be challenges. We anticipated challenges, but it was a little different. I actually thought that this year was more difficult than last year for everybody, the students, the teachers, administrators, and so on. So one of the things that we've really worked on this year was trying to get the kids back to routines. Getting to know friends again, you know, feeling comfortable, comfortable in school, interacting. And, and you know, working with our teachers and other students in the building. A lot of students were just used to using computers for months, so then we had to get hands-on activities back in. Um, and you know, so seeing a bunch of the kids during the year, we still feel that they are, there are gaps and we want to address those this summer. So we have a lot of programs that we've worked on even more so than last year. My team, I have to tell you, has been very, very good about the kids. We're really focused on quite a few numbers in the building. And what we plan to do tonight is just give you kind of a little summary of each of our programs that we're doing. So I have first Maria Burton, she's going to be doing the Yale Academy side of run. And she'll share a few things about what we're doing with students there.
When Maria at the Yale to direct for our school and last year, we met the for the Yale Academy that we had in that word came for students, incoming first graders to incoming graders. And um, so this year we have the same curriculum, science-based activities. It's a lot of fun building on oral language. Um, and we have three and a lot of the exact things for the kids this year. Last year we had about a hundred students and this year we're excited to have two hundred and so we doubled in size. And we're also operating, excuse me, we're operating the program at daily. Um, so again, it's going to be science-based therapies are going to be um history, most even the recycling, the beach and getting to do going to the future to the beach. We have reading support this year. We're so excited for kids students that's wanted. So get to work with the reading teachers when they're doing the books that we have. Oh yeah, so we have four leaders, again, science-based or literature. Human body, science, arts, science, birth and solar system, and things. So for example, with students, they can grow, um, we put through practice, the rest. They get to watch it grow and they grow fast. So they get to see if they're excited to take it home. Um, they get to learn about the important parts, all building and oral language and having fun.
She's a summer director for the seminar. She's the most dedicated, the most district and my goal to person. But she was talking about the Yale academy camps. We have them at every level this year. We started them just at elementary last year. So in tool together with forensic camp. The four programs that my departments are running have about five hundred and twenty-five kids. So two hundred kids, we have a seven, we have about thirty-five, forty at Bailey. We based on the needs of the kids coming in, newcomers. We have a lot of refugees that can integrate sixth and not going to integrate seventh. So we're working with those students again, their physics project base. I think my science brain comes into all of that. So a lot of that is based on the science. And the high school will do the same thing. Kids are late nine to eleven. And they are also going to do project-based science experiments and activities, but they need, they have the opportunity to read, write, listen, speak every day and enjoy everything else, which is our model, maybe this has been a model of language. Uh, the science camp is a forensic camp. And when I was talking to you about the year when we start planning, you know, January. Then one look at caring, we try maybe younger kids because last year we did this. Eighth graders going into ninth and my ninth graders going into tenth. So this year we decided to do fifth graders going into sixth and sixth graders going into seventh. And we have over two hundred and forty-six kids doing the forensic camp. They're going to be doing a lot of investigation. Uh, they're going to be doing fingerprinting, flash pattern. We have guest speakers coming in of the FBI, the police department, coroner's office. So they get to be exclusive at forensic program. We also have guest speakers from the H they come in. Also talk to them about the pros and the weaknesses, the partnerships we have with them. So I think it was very successful last year. And yet the last day of the camp was so much fun because they had to redo a scheme. So that's where we found some. So those are the four camps that I'm working with and the departments are working with. Any questions? We'll, we'll have pictures and more. So it's happy anyway. So next is the special.
Hi everyone. Um, so this year we're continuing our extended school year program over at South Mark School. It will run approximately fifteen days. Um, so just like title of our program and allow us that extended year. From a hundred and eighty days to about a hundred and ninety-five days for us into facilities. That is to maintain skills that they've learned over the course of the year. And first have some fun too. So we have a lot of different community fires that come in. Right? A lot of engaging activities during the day. We incorporate, incorporate a lot of STEM-based activities. It's just like all of our other students, we know our children are best. Using hands-on materials. Being able to work natural-based format with problem solving. We have, and it has book fair that's free for students. So it's very similar to the last thing, but it's free. So students come down to classes and pick out a few books for their libraries. We, people is not sure here where we, we began to incorporate Mel, women enhanced learning, which one of our P E teachers. Basically, that's just caring and acting and practical, human-based task and the, the research behind that is the most attention of that learning activity. So you might see our friend use a ball while practicing their networks and hopefully that needs to be of attention to networks. Running bike sports activities throughout the three. Field trips where these are people for P P boards and have folks from our team do various field trips for our students. Like to get to the point where we can go on a trip ourselves, but our, our students primarily that are in our program participate in our learning lab programs. Many of our staff.
So I'll be talking a little bit about the Lego camp that we are running this summer. That is for grades entering, active eight, and it is a hands-on learning task in small groups. There's about one hundred and eighty students participating in it, which is great. It really is looking at math, science, and some coding. So just kind of the difference we did not from this last year. This is a trial. This year we thought that that was a nice addition to both in the age range of the cover and the content area. Nicole says, look forward to social media and other pictures that she intends on getting out there so that we can see exactly what activities are and how they're being used by students. But I'm sure many of you've seen the Lego camps and, you know, the actual activities and things like that. And then you, some of you use Legos in the context. But this is really just all hands-on, really trying to make the experience about, you know, actually using your hands to create and applying those content areas and whatnot. So they think it gets a lot of. And then last year, you may recall, there was a collaborative between our schools and Community House. The Community House is, as you know, such an incredible partner to us. Again, we really do rely on them to provide a lot of the care that parents have. You know, overlaps with schedules and students are so well catered for by staff. So I won a grant last year that gave us the money to run a camp for sixty students. And we chose very, very carefully because sixty slots is not as many as we wanted. So we had to kind of figure choose what we didn't. Really focus on students that didn't have an in-person learning experience. We really wanted them to come back into the schools, get more comfortable. A lot of these students were kids who had already made them I can say as Yale or, you know, had some other risk factor that was kind of preventing them from being successful. But we figured may prevent them from being successful in the long term. So we wanted to bolster their summer, get them that. So this year, the Community House, they use a bunch. They wrote the grant and they got a two-year consecutive grant allocation. So we can do this summer and next summer and do this expanded to eighty students. It's, it's wonderful. So we're running that out of the cradle. It's, um, again, very project-based. Last year, the things they did, they were bridge building with bell drops and toothpicks. Um, and when I went in there and we did, you know, the exit slips from the camp, we asked the kids, you know, just like facial expressions. Circle how you felt about school prior to coming to camp. How do you feel about it now? And the mediocre faces and frowns went to smiles and a lot of the kids really said, I didn't know school beyond. I think they've been away from the building for so long, I think they forgot how to connect those connections with the staff that they were familiar with. Including the house, we did, I didn't make it easier transition. So this year eighty students and wonderful in that. Well, that's why I come up here next and tell you how the literacy programs like to tie in. So not only will these students be getting project-based learning in the house, they will also be getting literacy support with our highly qualified staff in the conference of that camp. So we're really just helping the year, we're the camp to make sure that students who may have struggled these last couple of years are getting. So I'm going to hand you this collection and kind of wrap up how those programs are intended. Thank you.
So I'm going to talk to you about literacy by meeting. We are actually embedding in every opportunity, saving and giving tasks for the public act six, six, two, O, requiring reading support for students in the Lance District. And so we have opted to position teachers to support what's going on in the Yale camp. And then also the extended school day camp. And then to meet the requirements of what is actually spelled out in the bill. We are embedding our support into the Community House camp, which requires proper monitoring. So we can take the scores of the students that may and then see how they then respond back in the fall. So we will be, we're going to use what they already have and make it their score. And then hope that we can build enough to stop the summer slide, which usually is pretty damaging. And see how the students are able to maintain the protein and surpass. So this is our first year doing that and sort of co-opted or collaborated with all these other opportunities. But we are primarily K, entering the versus to enter our. I'm also here for other reasons. So any questions to leave us on the end?
I have a couple of questions. Um, and to present the funding. So just any, this fall, I'm with Esser. I think there was like a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for Esser to stop, you know.
I don't know why I got. Yes. So what the Esser funding was earmarked lobbying for that specifically for summer enrichment. And that's really how we look for some enrichment. Um, so above and beyond ordinarily offered such as E S Y, really just looking for those gaps and making sure that we're filling them. So the Esser funding would be for, for instance, the Community House camp. But I can't, we still will be providing rules and transportation for our students as well as a nurse from our district. On the other hand, all of the fundings coming through or not all of them, but some of theirs may be a little like private. Um, the majority of the fundings coming from elsewhere. I know that has the exact numbers. That's been handed a paper from the last group, not saying, there's another one for you, it's a market for you. But I think that we're all, the money that the earmarked for summer is to be very wise and set, we are reaching almost, I think, nine hundred students this summer alone. Um, with our additional funding.
Um, is there other funds associated in that? This kind of goes back to me because Is that act, sorry, I haven't managed to look that one up yet.
Oh, it's thirty-six years.
Is there funding attached to it or they expect that the Alliance Grant Funding?
They have specifically spoken about Alliance Grant. They have indicated however, the focus of literacy academic success has just, uh, they post a position and they hired a position. And that is the entity that's then going to go through the funding that should support these types of programs. As I think, uh, the push for the science and reading is going to have, um, earmarked for it. How it's going to come about, whether it's summer reading or, um, other kind of funding at the Montea. And they have not given us the name of the person. So I don't know if you actually Uh, but I, they all say that by doing our courses, they should have, um, a better idea about the funding and that. Sounds usual, past the others.
Well, I mean, I, I would not consider that there's not funding for it. I'm concerned that there's actually like so many funding sources that there's Community House grant and that there's the Esser fund and then potentially money for this and, you know.
The way that they wrote this is very diagnostic. So we are trying to meet their requirements. We have the legal report, but since they didn't have the person in charge, I think it feels like I had to a letter of a law because it's just the first year.
And I think for us, we were trying to project out because this person of Esser funding took us through the years. Trying to figure out last year how there is the need for some program. I mean, you know, it was a, it was a bad dash to make sure that we needed the needs that we identified. And it was also a bad dash trying to keep track that we still have the role playing as a middle class. So we had huge students that have been in the buildings now this year, the expansion of programming because we had a federal handle. Here we put it over to set our sights and ensure we're presenting. So we now have kind of a couple more, like we may have given that grant to be helped because that will have that for the next two years. So it's going to stand in these other grants or these other programs. We can say we have that money because we set it aside for the next summer. It matters, you know, what I do now, either him or them. But we definitely knew that we potentially could grow over time because we're just a little bit more and more of a nation.
Did you see, was, did you see an increase number in the program with about sixty students that you targeted last year? Did you see an increase in that number in the regular school year?
So we saw the attendance increase. So their attendance improved. You can say that it improved because they didn't have the role-playing option available to them. I believe it's that it improved because they had a positive experience that they connected them down. So either way, we did kind of look at those students and those same, I didn't mention first, those same students are being ready and back. So they will have those three, hopefully, three second summers of being with that same program. We did want to follow that forward. See, it's this program that's successful and can happen to students with them at school. So we now have a whole group of students to follow. So that will be interesting over time to see if they continue to attend and then cover.
One more question. I just saw that there is a summer school for the high school students, which is credit recovery, which I hear any of you keep on. So I don't know if that's a whole separate issue, but I was thinking sort of because I think it's a fifty-five dollar charge for per class for credit recovery. And that just really struck me as like, and it was cashable, so that was close to them. Just trying to get clarification on why are they cashable? Why are we targeting students for credit recovery? Uh, especially since we have all this Esser money for learning recovery. Um, and also on the agenda, it's going to be, um, it'll be adult ed program to provide that for me. From my understanding, so it was just a little bit, I'm concerned for some high schoolers who might especially need not to go for that.
The last year, um, the management were given the option that you can do that. That's all involved. We can have, um, a higher adoption, virtual and universal, we can't do that. It's not for person. Um, the, the fashion, the fashion, we're trying to, but I'm for a couple of years. I'm trying to be that or not, or if that was called the rest of that. They can try to find where they know where something is. Maybe we're trying to get it. Uh, maybe don't check. A lot of them. Um, but we do want to get that kind of that means actually, we actually a whole week that, um, you know, it's easy to prepare to be like but yes, and maybe we should operate, we again, this year.
It's like the same system that to parents for money and for lunch money or to So we are here. How many students typically participate in the credit recovery?
Um, last year was a bigger number because of the one night, not here because it was free in federal. Um, I think at the youth level, a lot of the failure reports just have lobbying, the features disinterfered, the lobbying. So I think the failure reports like to where this year with all two. Um, also at that um, including our practices. So our London or New Zealand, who are already, you know, based on the sole end of the school year, but the learning. That is kind of certain. Off the discussion here, because that is for positive reasons, like the definition factors, because they're basically to finish their, their, they spell their kind of So what our teacher is doing is they're preparing for the school, they seem to be properly prepared. So we do, um, we have starting, so students were not choosing that. And we can't, um, go from two to one. I just love working with you, five teachers to begin with that or to, or through the online working. But for us, uh, we might look out and um, so there is that opportunity. I guess to hard and opportunities that we can go get that summer student back. So we are, uh, one of the factors we've mentioned, I think, of all not pass state. And these seem to catch it, but if you're there in not that ultimate, they're trying to go to that self-guessing, that you're not in a position where you're tackling that. Two years, some two. With that, we're and then, um, where's each of the, the first company, where they do not have one. Have that, I can't even you've been to the county, but you just sort of that. So that is self-widely, um, so perfectly. And, um, that money goes to that. And that. Five. Um, but we do have. Your central offices, you have to see absolutely the person actually. That's happened before. We always pay about that. So we need to tell how. Make sure to. Right, right. Do that. Parents said, look, um, I didn't want my children to do this, but I don't have money to take it. Very small people play us. They put that, they always had to. Seeing that it was a major graduating, they have seen that to that and on stage. So there's two options. First, we are funded. Yeah. This is actually sort of on that. We've done before and it's sort of on it. We just kind of like, that's what I stopped to get. But that opportunity, if you're still having a topic for each activity. All that. So we do need, um, the online. Something to be that. Structures that allows some thousands of people to have much less. Okay, she said that's. Gradually over the summer. Um, really trying to make sure that our. By the. Here that your diet nutritionally, because there are other practices that are completely. Have to. These are not so basic. Also. Edition part that they want to build. We will try. Or, yeah. One question. Hold on. Is credit recovery is different than regular summer school, et cetera? Or? Um, not really. So the, the, the summer school you have in, you know, sixteen days, three hours a day. So we consider that to be credit recovery because you're not taking the full course. So the idea is we take credit recovery because by that, um, you couldn't just having not taken English two. Walk in and say, I'm going to take English two in the summer. That's going to happen with the mission. Because the idea kind of is that through all the instruction and maybe for whatever reason, you're probably passing grade. Or your attendance such that you can have enough to see hours. Um, so it's really credit recovery. Wouldn't allow in most cases, although you have them from outliers, children, they only advertise this course during the summer. That's really nice. So whether it's online or in person, it's going to be credit recovery because it's not required. Charge for the program in the past weeks that we did last. We did not last year and we did not two thousand nine. Um, I now only go back to two thousand when it started, but every year since two thousand, except for two thousand nine and last year. I just always think of. I'm sure you, I know.
I love.
You're just saying things, you know, just hearing all the nice people all the time. You know, I just, in the present, which I see that they would offer for the week. So I don't know. I mean, there are people who will ask for everything, but then there are people who are too proud to ask. Um, you know, and they're getting things now. I don't know. I just, especially with the fact that there is. It was just kind of hard for me to swallow. Like, I want kids to work in turn, but, you know, obviously. Four year or whatever reason, you know, maybe there should be a charge, but just.
Dana, I think it is.
Could you hear that there's stuff going on?
Yes.
Before they get to summer.
We have to make sure.
Yeah. You started with the summer.
Right. Our graduation percentage. Uh, pre-COVID, are we, you know, saying that this can't offer and encourage? A better percentage of graduates? So like, would it be beneficial if we were to find a way to fund? With hand and. That and bigger programs or markets that access.
So when I started having this year, my diet vision rate was. So our diet vision. That we want for that vision. Borrowing, seeing and actually. Um, they're fired, it's COVID, we're at eighty-nine point eight. Um, last year we did dip a little bit. Uh, but it did, really did have many things. Power speakers. In your, yeah, in your, to be right, right? For a couple of weeks. Practically. Um, number one, I do with Stefania, Karen, and they made that. They created a new program under the new house. Program. For a lot of. Which means that students, like that eighteen, on office. Or two programs. New house. Once, like, you know, lots of all kinds of activities. The problem with that is. Uh, and so they reset twenty-one year apart and use that program. So the program is great. This is the first year that our homework is impacted by that. So it's, you know, it's only a number and I don't want it to back up. But if, when that's such a great program, I wish to see change, right? That is important because it's actually, I'm silly that that will affect graduation rate. Um, they really are not our graduates, so you just continue the education. What the state will tell you is that those students are recording in the sixth year homework. The answer to that is sometimes, but because if they're twenty-two, if they have started high school when they're fourteen. Um, you're not done, uh, in the sixth year. So, um, sometimes they're recording in the sixth year homework depending on how old they were when they started high school and how old they are when they exited. Um, maybe they're. I've been asked to graduate them, then can they go to that approach? No. Um, okay. Other significant. Um, I believe they dark percentage that year. We monitor it, we see to other districts. And I would never want to name anybody else's student for anything, but there are some districts that are worried about follow through. If you send paperwork, have a new shell head, example, who's very good at it. If I send a paper to shell head, said, Kim Penny has drawn from my senior high school. I think for help high school, um, look forward to. If Kim Penny did not register with shell head within the. Uh, they will start pursuing Kim Penny. Issues, issues coming in. They will actively pursue getting that. Some of our larger districts unfortunately sent information off from the child registration. And I get it, but for large. But what happens is the student enters power link. And then draws on, does the correct way is getting a permit that's going to. Even if that graph is a plan, you're going to be restricted to Kevin back here. And they do, they have registers in the paper. That is counted. So as the transparency that happens during COVID, I think that's worse than usual. A little bit of an upset in our seniors who do not graduate, but not much. I think the rate of our seniors who actually did this, who did not graduate was very small and, um, the bigger education was, but through other things, they packed it or they were hiding it. Correct. That, which is so good. Uh, not where I wanted to be. I did want to get nine or ten. Um, we were so so close that it would be quite quickly. But I think that this year, um, we are right back where we. You'll be comfortable, you just don't know sometimes all the other factors. So what we do is, uh, let the numbers out of the ease. I will contact you if you have some questions that we see. And the fraction, I would always do that. You should not write in the homework. Why? And it could be if they just see past, potentially be likely, create a financial documentation, which creates. But a lot of the times that they might come out. Roll, so it's kind of in the fraction and the fact. One, and we also. This is what is actually put in. So I can't think of a single incident where they just stopped that. You know, going, you know, when all that. But I always, I can just hope it's too long. So to give you the short end. So that, yeah, they did help with the, um, the beginning of that. I can't contest that some kids do have kind of a repaying in their mind. They have a complete, a contract, they're down. They do it.
To give Dana the credit she already has because she knows me well. She, I'm terrible at phone numbers. I know Dana's never hung her by heart because we are in contact so frequently about students. And she's a fierce advocate. So like, she knows that there's a few kids and she's looking at, she, she knows everybody's grandmother, aunts. I mean, probably three of his graduates that were related. So she'll say, I know Tammy's having a tough time. This kid needs a few more credits. How come? So those, those kids are never gone unnoticed. They're not lying. There's no one that flies under the radar here. And how hard as they may try, um, they're not escaping Dana for us. So, so we are.
That one, I have that one.
Okay, so we're not. We're still on. We, we are in constant contact about how we can make sure that every student. It needs that support, getting that support, that funding, you know, like Dana said, she said, I need this much money. And I have just this much, of course, you know, we're going to figure out how to make that happen. Uh, but it's, it's, I think, the collective efforts of everyone at the high school that really they're looking at every student. And for those kids that were launched that, you know, running and came back, they're way back in those offices. And captains are pulling them in. So we're the outreach workers for none other. So there's a lot of people looking at.
I, I really can't say about the outreach that we've had this year. Uh, we want to talk about Bayberry Rock because it's not a very high powered institution. But they are, um, biggest. Shit, we're at that, that we have right now. Um, and now we have. Several more. But I mean, probably not a lot. Kylie Wolf, she has, um, background of help. She is, um, so simply like I, I sent her a bit maybe today. We're going back, it shouldn't come back, right? Because she's like, yes, it doesn't go back with a fashion maybe better. She, um, she's back. All of our outreach workers know, um, Rich and Rob, they make it. They're just such an asset. On the ground, going out, ringing at doors. Um, all of those things. About that. Unlisted, shut up out there.
I also want to hear about the additional support during the school year. So I think it's awfully hard to learn what we need to learn in our public class to be successful after. Because it's not just getting enough credits to get through, get to the next level. But you need to build on that foundation, especially for those kids that are going to go on to a trade school. Because as we were very heard by one of the trade presentations about all the math that's involved in building things. Um, or to college, like you have to have that. Knowledge that comes over time and you're trying to do this. So I'm glad to hear that we're doing stuff in the beginning of the year or during the school year to keep them in the class that's, you know, a full term, a full term class.
That is just hard, but, um, they have that ability and they start working. So I don't see that get to that point where it doesn't have a path. Some paths that probably kind of. But I always talk to people that I shouldn't have to be. But you know, you're on a diet and you. So good for second day, you weigh yourself and you have a lot of money. As a prodigal, you're saying, oh, you know what, I can really. My partner's car. So like, that's it. Forget it. I can talk. You know, I go to, so you go ahead with it. For adults, we have that. Not to be of kids. They have had that moment where they've tried. That's really hard for them. So we have to kind of put things where, you know, we're not giving the later reaction. Feel of you guys, we'll have to. We're putting kind of that gap over the table. How to get some of these. Shut down.
Listen, we'd like to get. I mean, that's.
We're back. Okay, so, um, the math video. And now we are moving into two other little things that I just need to highlight that, um, we want to. Um, we have a subscription to a audio book program called Learning Ally. And it's specifically developed for students with dyslexia. But it's available for all of our students because vice versa, most students to classroom. They have that. So everyone has access to it. So on May twenty, I got a note from the, uh, it's, uh, Robert Dyer from Learning Ally. And he said, he'd like to congratulate, uh, West Haven School District at being selected to be honored at our annual spotlight on dyslexia conference. For the district's tremendous work in advancing literacy outcomes. This award is intended to honor districts on leading edges of best practices and making advancements and aligned in science and reading. Understanding the whole child when it comes to literacy and effectively using the Learning Ally audio book as a solution in this work. So. Here in the feature at a conference this coming year. Um, this is a one minute video. So. Congratulations.
District is pleased to recognize this year's. West Haven School District is pleased to recognize this year's spotlight for dyslexia conference. The special product recognizes the term designation for educators. They need to. And perhaps. By first needs of our students. Most of all, it acknowledges our students' strong resilience and drive to overcome the challenges they have faced over the last two years. During our five months of students in nine schools, friends break cake for twelve. Our district is dedicated to improving their outcomes and enriching educational experiences for all students. The neighbors of the kindergarten, the student teachers, and the students that use this opportunity to innovate. And to support our learning environment. And celebrate the many accomplishments of our community and then for the now life of the first students.
So. So that's the, um, the video that. Um, and then, um, I do want to also bring to your attention. Um, I think last year, um, Neil had spoken to us and we had written, uh, a grant for something called Teach Rock, which was coming out, um, of New Jersey. Uh, a rock music program. Steve Van Zandt is, uh, it's sort of baby. And, um, we put together a video and we were accepted. So I'm going to show you the video.
Super excited.
Uh, yeah, you should be super excited. I'm not. Hold this.
I think we're. We're Debbie and John Maxine. West Haven. Sign language. We are teaching. Watching it live. Performing it. Writing it. Share. Open everyone's eyes. But it's.
What? So, um, we are supposed to have been accepting tonight, but the fact that we're filming, I know that. Uh, two of these people have been requested at these. So. Um, but, uh, Deb and John Maxine. Playing the summer and they will give us lessons for that. English. She's something that. Very exciting. Hey, guys. That's your excellent. Too good. Maybe it was my class of nineteen eighty-four class. Especially. Bringing all the t-shirts back.
So that's our summer programs. Um, and we will let you know who could be taking pictures on one of the summer. Share with that. Well. Um, before I turn this over to Mike O'Brien to give you a little introduction to our website. I just want to say to him, I said this earlier, that Neil is doing well. Uh, he's going to be sending me the update on how he's doing. So. So now, now, Mike O'Brien, uh, is sharing the website.
So now, now, Mike O'Brien, uh, is sharing the website.
Here's the, the homepage right here, and all the school pages are gonna replicate this template, they'll look very similar. And probably never let you hear that this is where all of our links be. I think that's, I go through the site, and it's easier to navigate, more user-friendly, it's a lot easier to find.
Our school portal at the top makes this mom very happy, it's a bright light.
Yeah, the, uh, registration handbook, our school app. It's a little bit easier to use and you're prepared to.
I appreciate that, when I called you and said, all the school phone numbers should be in the same place on your school's page, so you already had that revelation and we're working to get that safety care. Was looking for a phone number.
Yeah, so, so our staff pages are, are updated, um, so. Be a lot easier to find, um, staff at school, you could, um, staff number, that's the phone number, email, uh, go through the department as well. That's the homepage. Uh, underneath the, the, here, we have the news section, um, where all of our name, or news stories are gonna be there. So as this page is populated, you can get pushed off to the bottom, um, but there's still gonna remain here. You can see all the news, all the news stories are gonna, you know, it'll also filter by school as well.
Back on the right side, that is our, like, our social media feed.
Yeah, so the live feed is basically social media. It's not forwarded directly from our social media accounts, but it's essentially the same. Now, you can back out of the website, post, um, everything, social media and live feed. And so basically, essentially what you see on Twitter, um, and Facebook and Instagram. You can only put four photos on this, though, um, so we're at Instagram, Facebook, at, uh, Twitter's for, and the live feed's for, so. So you can, Twitter. And again, here, you can go to see also, to just read, you see all of the live feed, um, stories. You can also break down by school as well. But who's in my feed, uh, our calendar events. Go through it, on the beach here, and also go to see all events. Here you don't have a list of you, also. Also, you have, uh, founder. And nice after this too, if you're also downloaded, um, to your email or.
The download feature.
Yeah, so right there, uh, so, sorry, I just gonna, you download, go right to, um, either your email or my folder.
It's like the ICS.
Yeah.
So like the CRIAC goes with your schedules and changes, so that you'll get the changes.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, if you only wanted to prepare a, like, that one school, like, that one school, go to schools, they showed their calendar, that one all there, so like right now, that's really practical, but if you want to go to this school, you go to this school. If that's, we have a spotlight section, so this is something that we could rotate, we could do like T2 spotlight, staff spotlight. Right now, we'll have to, this will be your secret spotlight for. Just for my reviews, for the secret spotlight, we're just, helps us to develop where to go to school next year, and what they plan on major, or what they plan on. But this is something that will rotate, uh, next year goes on.
And when is this spotlight?
Our feed, hopefully this will be, hopefully this.
This is a huge honor, thank you, because somebody that works in ITS, I know that our website has not been updated. But it has not been updated since. So that's a good long time of a lot less functionality, so I, this was huge, thank you. So I appreciate you, uh, meeting that challenge, you're coming up with such a great format.
And so we, um, a lot easier to go forward, so we can get stories up there very quickly. So a lot easier than that as well, so. The main person is very excited about it, but I can get five B new stories up there very quickly, very fast.
Can you help build inventory or something there, or are they going to?
We're, I think we're gonna have to put, just because we want to make sure that one person that's received all of that, um, that doesn't get that in.
And that's why the page started to be different.
We might like the system, like, to, I think, one person, obviously, like, to get that consistent.
So much to you though.
There's certainly, yeah, but it's, it's, um, we, they actually got some, uh, our, I guys, this. It's a little bit easier to have the. I think one of my summer projects is, updating some pages, maybe from one of the, like, next year, you just, you just have to have. Um, this is one example where that's the time to kind of, um, update it from whatever.
Get like student info, teacher info, parent info, like user, or, I mean, obviously, like, you're the expert. But did you get, like, lots of, like, questions coming in? Like, how do you, use a facility, feedback?
It kind of, it was more like asking around, but it wasn't like, uh, professor there, that it was, it's not people. We did even the administrators, we got their, um, sorry, sorry, um, didn't meet the students at the desk.
Like any students that. Partner of the day, over the summer, and you're saying that you're painting it up, it kind of sounds, yeah, just kind of thinking outside the box, that you know if there are students who are looking for. If that, students are feedback.
There's still a lot of, like, I should say, a lot of, there were a lot of reasons to do that. There was a lot of, uh, pages that were sophisticated, the old site. So I'm, I'm picking up, I think, a quick set of eyes on some students. The, there's, oh, the other thing too, is that, um, it formed very nicely to mobile or tablets. Uh, so this will be the mobile version on your iPhone. Then if any, like, there's any alert, if there's a, like, a snow delay or school closing, whatever, um, those alerts will go across the top of the page, or like a banner opposite, like, when you go onto the home page and says, like, uh, school is basically there, or whatever, so just, just not just kind of people, it'll be really nice. If you're comfortable, there you can see, you know, questions, really, wondering if this one's special or. The other thing to this, though, is that we have a mobile app that's available for the website as well. Um, I don't think it's gonna be ready to go right when we launch the website, but it will be coming up shortly after. I don't have it that one, so you're right now, but, um, it's, so with it is, please. So I'm, 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 I'm getting push notifications, um, that's something I'm very excited about with this, uh, this one.
Um, I, our senior representatives have a banquet tonight, so unfortunately, we couldn't make it. Um, I did need a, for their service from the board that they have graciously, uh, opportunity delivered to them, which we see them later at the ban banquet, um, we will miss them, and please convey our thanks and gratitude for their excellent service. We look forward to seeing you, who are represented, for the representatives. We have that, uh, board, um, and so people have, oh.
I'm trying to switch it up, like, everybody's switching seats, and I feel like I don't wanna be picking on you. Are we doing, just boarding for you?
Um, yeah, I was, I know you said there was so much going on, like, all the invitations we got and everything, and I, I took. Looking at them, looking at my schedule, looking at them, looking at my schedule, unfortunately.
That's why there's, I remember.
But I did see that, like, people were in the pictures, and I was glad that some people were able to attend. I'll be able to attend, um. I was just curious, I kind of asked a few of these questions with the summer school. Just curious about probably phone numbers, what are looking for next year? Um, and then just kind of was curious about, um, you know, expulsions this year, just health issues, and just, I'm just curious about those numbers, they don't have to be shared.
I feel like we usually get an email with expulsion hearings, correct? So if we haven't had a, an email to your board yet, you know, that several expulsion years come up, thankfully, I believe that's. So.
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any in, like, a month or two.
Cause I've been slowly going through the biologic, and I saw that there was supposed to be three numbers of the board that sit on expulsion. But I, I hadn't heard anything, like, maybe no news is gonna use.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, it felt weird, so.
Hmm, well, I just wanted to.
So is, yeah, Amanda shared, cause I do, I know she, Amanda shared a video on Facebook about the system that.
What is what is this?
I am.
Just, actually, it should be shared everywhere, but that was not, but was brought up, it was brought to me by a parent saying.
Yep, I saw Amanda shared on her Facebook, so like all knew the next day, it was like, I can't find it now, but I'll find Amanda and have her show you her Facebook post, it was a really great system that I bought. Although we may not have four hundred thousand dollars to spend on a system, um, right out of the box, or have the options in there that seem very, um, low to no cost, um, that we could implement, and Neil said he's gonna, uh, have a show, and we'll talk to, um, Patrick about. I never say his last name right.
Sorry.
Turnler, I didn't say, so that's why I said.
I probably said it.
Uh, but he's always on top of that.
Yes, it would be a good pilot for the Washington School.
Yes.
He was amazing.
A lot of the things that.
I, I.
Yeah, I thought it was great, I spotted it right after, unfortunately.
All right, sorry, this is a reference to what they can, is not everything. Everyone should know everything, coming from someone, I think, here's all the time.
Guys, like, can't be quiet.
Some things are on a little cheer basis, but I think maybe put some parents' minds in this, I think, to. Know where we are with our, with our policy, and that's the thing, so.
I agree, we did have this come a couple of years ago, and again, uh, he had said, you know, I'll tell you this much, and then there's so much other stuff that we're not gonna know, and you won't know ever until.
Sweet thing, that sounds.
Have to do, which is great, um, and I know that this school was designed, wasn't as full as designed with a lot of those features in mind about, like, the dead space and the hallways, you know, seeing, you know, down both hallways from. You know, certain vantage points and stuff, so that's a good, a good point.
Can you make enough to ask Neil to talk to, to people, to people, to people, to people, to people, to make it so. Just happened to be talking to a Western, we talked, he was very confident. I, I just.
No, I'm just, I'm, absolutely, but whoever told this was, it's great, it's pretty incredible. You don't have a one.
No.
You know, so to be, I love the, it is, two years ago, we had this meeting, and I think it's great.
I don't know, is that anything?
So, you know, it's almost, I'm saying. No one died, I think, I'm. Well, we, we have missed. So much, you know, for, while we're working that.
Um, anyway, instead of the top, twenty breakfast, I'm able to keep the, this is Kenny. Also, we have great pictures, the last one, the US, the, the, the schools, carried forward, so it's not. Possibly, yeah, all having, of the, high school career, particularly. And I think they took that issue, also having up to a couple of power sign thing. So Mike, my, uh, website, if you want to recognize our beautiful there, obviously, trying to bounce back COVID. I see the high school theater has ten operations in forty-four categories. This brings, I believe, one of our schools priced at the whole of the whole.
Yep. They're not, Madeline, Madeline.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Obviously, recognize our sophomore team, a team that had a great year, which ended on Friday, which turned the whole grand time, I'm proud of. Obviously, recognize, raised, which can help, Bonnie, Tab.
Yeah, she's, uh, actually, she's a decent student, um, but she, she plays on a basketball team, she's been out.
Yep, who recognizes, all state girls basketball register, and also our coach, Corianni, Coach Corianni, who's recognized the all-area basketball coach, yes, so obviously, positive, so.
And I think the junior, all-state softballers.
And Chinese radio and, oh, no, there's one.
There you are.
I knew it was, I knew it was a problem, I was, I was.
Three years.
Oh, yeah. So, I was sorry.
Oh, yeah. I have to say, it's so great to see, I follow a lot of, of, uh, you know, West Haven residents and their kids, see their kids and their, their joy and their kids' successes coming across on social media, social media. I always try to make a comment, you see, I'm reading about the, uh, Spout, the kind of partnership last week. Congratulations, um, just the, the opportunities that they have, and the presence that they put out there, like, I think it's so good for parents of younger kids to see that our kids are doing all these fabulous things at West Haven High School. It chokes me up. So congratulations, I know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hold it together. This, this funny year always makes me cry, literally, from when, the time my kids were little, I would go to, like, the football games or the band concert, or we'd play somewhere, and I'd be sobbing, like, it was my last day of her, and I'm like. And I'm like, oh, like, oh, your kids are, I'm like, no, she's nine, but it's so sad. So I'm trying to hold still. Um, that was, I also, that's how I'm talking, the, the word site was fabulous, they're handing out college money.
For eighteen thousand.
Hundred eighty thousand, eighteen, hundred eighty thousand dollars to West State High School seniors. That was great. I also saw the, uh. Regular, uh, uh, play from the, you know, workshop group. But I also went to see the senior written, produced, directed, um, murder mystery play the other night, which was really great. It's fun, interactive. I got called on as an audience member, so that was super fun. Just the talent and the dedication these candidates have unmatched by any.
And are in all the brackets.
I know I missed that, I was so.
It's, it's not my favorite.
That's why I tried to have a big favorites, but I feel like that's one of my pieces of events of the year. Because those folks that are getting those degrees, not that our regular ed students haven't tried so far, but I feel like they made a special extra effort to go back and do this for themselves. And the pride on their faces when they're getting the diploma. I'm super sorry that I was having to. Thank you for. Um, with that, I think that's the end of board reports and I can move on to D one of a pool of minutes for the May second, uh, twenty twenty two meeting. On paper, any post, any extensions, motion pass. I'd like to make, and I'd like to entertain a motion to do D two twenty two dash sixteen through twenty two dash twenty six all inclusive for resignation from retirement. Second. Any discussion? I do have one, Christine Montana, Miss Megan's, um, ninth grade back teacher and literally saved her and turned her into a whole student by the time she graduated my school. I just was reminded of this because she was a pure advocate with this Montello and she gave a speech about her, um, at the pure advocate dinner that just came up in my Facebook members a couple of days ago. Um, and it was there, it made me cry, of course. Um, and she was such an asset to the high school community. And I think I'm pleased to find out that she may be coming back with her retire, retire, rehire her next year. So I think the kid will benefit greatly from her services. Uh, and I also want to wish all the other teachers and staff good luck in their, in their new positions elsewhere or their well deserved retirement. Uh, motion to, oh, David. Any of those? They don't care, any extensions? D three, uh, twenty two dash twenty seven to twenty two dash twenty nine, I just, and motion for that to be all inclusive. Second. We have your motion, Patrick, second. Um, any discussion?
I'm just curious, um, when teachers are hired for left handed boards, not for us, it's in the.
The word math is just left off. I think it's just a typo, it should say math.
Oh, both just.
They're both math. They're both math. I think it's just a typo, usually does that. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any posts? Sorry, I didn't need to just go up like that. Yeah, I was waiting, I was like, I think you're math. And I was thinking for a minute, so thank you. Uh, any extensions? Motion passes on thirty four, we have new business, the adult ed, um, N E D P expansion three, which came in our packet, this large, um, packet of paper that I appreciate all that info. Um, I want to execute a motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? I see we have spot here, so if there's any questions, I can.
So I know it's, I'm pleased by the others of the school that, um, especially offer this program. And I, I was trying to understand, like, what's that mean? But you know, I went online and looked at the program, obviously participants need to, unfortunately, provide. Like, okay. Hopeful, um, I'm just curious if this need is part of that. What is the need that you're seeing, can you explain a little bit about?
Yeah, N E D P is the National External Performance Program. It's a federally backed experience, it's a federal demand that we have for about twelve years now. This is our third expansion of it. And so it's like the third iteration of the event, because we are the only one in the area, in this area, doing it. And so we, so we, um, we do it for the Milford residents as well, we get federal money for that. We do it for the entire valley, so it's the valley general. We have that school and then they also do West State High School and we expanded it to five locations. So we have, uh, Milford, we have Valley Regional, we have West State High School, we have West State Community House and the boys school. That's all sites where people do it and it's a hundred percent online. And basically, to get in, you have to impact a certain math and language arts skill sets. And you also need to have a computer that has a camera, microphone, and also a digital connection. And what they'll do is, um, they will need their assessors, they can need that in person if they choose, they can need them through the Zoom. And what they'll do is they'll open up, um, levels within the program. And then the students have to be subordinated, they have to go through it. And if they see that there are some issues that they, that there are some roadblocks, you know, the, the session's kind of going to play with them to say, what's the problem? What can I help you with? You know, maybe they can't do the work for them, but they can help them afford to solve problems. And so this expansion really allows us to, because a lot of that money, we use, piece of it is to pay the people, but also need technology for that. So we have, we, we always, always need computers. We have to market, it's going to be advertisement. And so like part of that money and part of the other, we can't find, we can't, we can't use to buy, um, advertisement on billboards on ninety five to just advertise. To advertise all of the, so they feel rested to have. And so it's kind of put in small companies. Um, but yes, and we use three schools that we are, that we use in West State High, Milford, and we get that.
So. The funds requested that we're requesting that from the federal.
Yes, but in order for us, we have to constantly, in order for the Fed to approve us, we always need to have Board of Education approval to do so. Because they want to see that, the, the board wants to see a continuation of selling. And I've already said we did the grant and, um, I just put on the grant that the, it's pending, so depending on we go tonight, whether it will be being expanded or not. Because it's, we got a lot of extra money next year, especially with COVID. We, you know, we're looking to try and expand our numbers a lot. Um, in the past, we've had fourteen, fifteen people, um, a year. For whatever reason, COVID took a whack at it and so we're trying really hard to reach a lot of those people where. Traditional classroom setting doesn't work, so it's a dollar, like, uh, high school diploma, where someone, if it was someone my age and I, I'm going back to school. There's no way I would learn, out of biology. That G P is too difficult. And so this program just translates life skills that you learn into academics. And so, so you may not know that all the, all the things that people have the basis has moved in academics and they know. And this program helps translate that for them and then it puts them in those situations. So like, you know, those SAT questions. Train A, you're Chicago at five miles an hour, train B from Seattle. So, and so they don't see that math, they can translate a little bit better for them. And I tell them, the best example is, um, my stepfather is in construction and he never went to college. I struggled with math quite a lot. And then I came home from college one day and I was going to go to the basement. And he goes, don't go in the basement. I go, look down, he took all the stairs. And then I said, all right, I'm not going to the basement, but I go to the test and I just see what he's working on. And it was, and it was basically danced out of what I was, wow, what are you doing? I have to figure out steps, it had to be thirteen steps that would be this wide, it'd be this long. And I was like, I'm doing that in college now, it's really, it's sort of something. And so, so those different things, he never really had a traditional school experience, but he was able to translate all those things into a working environment. And he was actually a very smart man in math, but he's like, oh. And so that's a lot of people that we get where it's, they, you know, they, you know, it's like confidence builder with them. Because they know that they have those natural intellectual abilities and they're just gonna figure it out.
So we break it.
Yeah.
Um, so this is, this is fully federally funded.
One hundred percent.
You just need our.
Yeah, I just gave the board's approval in order to keep it going.
Okay, do the other towns have, like, speaking too? We.
We, we do it for them and it's really, we do it for them and then, but they, but they can, they can choose if they want. Like for instance, um. You know, let's say I live in Derby, but I work in West State. It might be easier for me to just, you need my assessor if I stayed at the all the way home in Derby, but if you need my assessor, typically go to Derby or vice versa. I can just go to the Valley Regional High School, do it there and then go home. So we leave that as a partnership because for whatever reason, those districts did not want to do it, but we said that we are willing to do it. And we did the funds for it, but they also helped recruit for us. And so they also had a statement where those people like from Derby, Monroe, Seymour or Milford, that's where they did, but they will have a Western High School diploma because they went through our program. And so we, so they, basically, I always said, no matter how they do it, even a high school diploma is the best way to improve the citizenry of other town. The more mature the offer, the more they're going to contribute and we're just looking to find ways to create ways to build. And this is a great way to do it. And I think this extension grant we have it for another two years. And I think by then, I hope we can expand it to. And we have expanded it to not just schools, but workplaces and businesses and, um, A W I C, we have expanded it to. And so we'll do a lot more. I think that this is the third iteration of it, hopefully what they allow us to do again. We do.
Like, help everybody for like the home books, but I know we did it for like general student population. Are you getting?
We don't get, we don't get any open bank because we're, seventy five percent of adult ed, um, that's high school diploma, it's funded by the state. And the other twenty five percent comes from the workforce. So, yeah, so we, and we have to operate within our, within our grant budget. And so, I mean, and we do pretty well by it. And so right now, we're in the process, the grant's gonna end June thirtieth, so we're in the process of spending all that money. Because if you don't spend it, it loses for next year. So we're looking to tap out next year.
Do you, do we buy, ever buy computers for the adult sport?
Yes, we have, um, we were looking to buy computers for the adult students and we could keep them for us, they could use them in the classroom, the teacher would have to return them. Um, unfortunately, by no one's fault, COVID happened and then everything dried up. And then we put the money, you know, we did request it, we did the funding, but it's just, it's difficult to get. I know a lot of these things are difficult to get because of the chips. And so I know like my, my neighbor, they be taking the movers new car and he, he got it ten months later, they did the chips. And so I think that's the whole, we, we can put in for more and more computers that I'll need to go along. Can we use, we can teach your people that wanna have teachers have a laptop where they can, if they need to, they can use it at home. They could, um, go to one of our sites and I don't, and I, and I don't think a desktop anymore is. I think it's, it's personally to carry around. Questions?
Right, your target population.
Remember that when you do the speech next year, congratulations.
Great job, Scotty.
Thank you.
I also love the expanding workplaces, because if someone's already active somewhere and they can do it on their lunch hour.
Yep, it's so good.
Hugely helpful, hugely helpful, so great job. Um, so I will, uh, ask for, uh, in the paper. Any extension, uh, any opposed, any extensions? Um, the rest of the agenda is informational, so I'll execute a motion to your. Motion, second. All data.